Like to call the order, call the order of the February ninth meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council member Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michelini.
Here.
Very good. If you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approval.
Second, motion is second to approve the agenda. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next, we have citizen presentation. This is the opportunity for someone to appear before the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Pete, do we have anyone online that might be waiting to speak to us?
Not at this time, John.
Is there anyone in the council chambers who would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll just remind everyone, a listing of our operating principles that we support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In doing our business, we expect everyone to act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Next would be consent. With the resolutions.
Approval.
Second, the motion is second on consent. Further discussion? Seeing none? Would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post the vote on our consent items? And the consent items.
I, it is not coming up and I'm logged in.
Say yes.
Yes.
Our consent items passed by a vote of five to zeros. Thank you. Next up, we have an introduction of our utility billing specialist, Liz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am super excited to introduce Maritza Ellerkon. She is going to complete our administrative services team as our utility billing specialist. She comes to us from the city of Perry where she was the utility billing clerk for 12 years.
Maritza. Hello, I just want to introduce myself. I am Maritza and yes, I've come from Perry and I'm very excited and I can't wait. And I want to thank you guys for giving me this opportunity.
Welcome very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Liz. Next, we'll move into our action items. The first one is public hearing on Rio Valley water. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, that was published in the Des Moines Register on January 23rd, 2023.
Very good. Thank you. Jonathan?
Evening, Mayor and council members. Start off, I want to give a quick overview of the project and just say that this is phase two of the Rio Valley main replacement. Phase one occurred last year to the north. A little bit about the scope of the project. It's about 2,700 linear foot of our main replacement. Forty-five services are being switched over and then some PCC patching and the intersections will be fully reconstructed. On February 1st, the city received four bids for the project from various contractors. After tabulations, we determined that J and K Contractor Contracting was determined to be the lowest responsible bidder. The city has worked with J and K Contracting before. Their most recent project has been the 2017 Walnut Trunk Santeri Sewer Extension. Staff recommends awarding the contract to J and K Contracting. And with that, I'd be glad to take any further questions.
Questions. We'll start with you, Ted.
So Jonathan, are we, and maybe this is a question for Jeff, but are we also doing the street rehab for 104th Street while we're doing this? Or 104th Street's pretty rough shape as well, right?
It does entail the replacement of two, I believe it's two intersections and patching in that area along with doing the sidewalks as well.
Just patching.
Uh, yes.
Further question? I thought we talked about that with 104th Street, that when we were doing the water main replacement, that we would also be doing the road too.
We are doing the road, not a full reconstruction though.
Okay.
So this would be patching of the worst. Do you have a map of John of?
Uh, yeah, I can pull up the plan.
Yeah. Show a map of the areas that are going to be worked on. So just similar to how we did the north project, the phase one project, we did a substantial amount of PCC patching and intersection reconstruction because we were tearing it up anyway, and also some of the bad issues in the area. And that's the same with phase two. So it's not a complete reconstruction like we're working over 99th Court and 111th and 14th here, but there's definitely patching work happening.
When we say patching, we're not just talking about filling pottles. We're talking about like a whole slab.
Cutting out sections, full PCC.
Right, PCC. Okay. Okay.
But I think it would be good.
That makes me feel better. Yeah, Woodcrest is a good example. Okay.
Show you some of the areas, especially along 104th, because I know that's been a question mark of what's being done with this project.
Because that's the main, you know, it's the main, yeah, it's the main road into the neighborhood, so.
There we go. So there's a series of sheets that show.
Oh, that's what killed the.
The patching. Uh, this is the southern half of that between Ricardo and Clark. You can see the intersection there getting completely reworked and then your localized patch throughout. And we did work with our field staff to determine the panels that need, that do need to be replaced. Um, and it looks like it's actually three intersections and a few reconstruction storms sewer in the area as well.
That's just 104th that he's showing there.
Yep.
This is throughout the area in that neighborhood.
So will we be closing like one lane at a time for the whole way or, because again, that's heavily traffic.
Yeah, no. Um, so what we're doing is closing only one intersection at a time so that that traffic is always has an opportunity to get out of the neighborhood and through, um, for the localized patching and just be closing like individual lanes until those patches are up.
Okay, and that'll start in the spring. Sorry, Eric. Last question.
Yep, I haven't forelately coordinated a start date with J and K yet, but um, we'll, we'll get that going once uh, we start working with the pre-con.
Couple, couple of quick questions. So when we do those intersections then, because that is the arterial into that neighborhood, the feeder road right there, they'll, they'll go around or they, they won't be able to go through those at all or? And then how's that plan being communicated to the neighbors?
No, uh, good question. So the first one is, yeah, those, those intersections will be fully closed one at a time. And as for communication with the, the community in the neighborhood, we got our online project updates, but we're also sending out mailers to get all the residents up to speed saying, hey, we got a listing to and we can feed those direct updates to you. There'll be also traffic control out there to indicate, hey, this specific intersection is going to be closed as well.
What's the length, time of that project?
The date of substantial completions, the end of August. Once again, the start date kind of varies. Ideally, if the paving and the, the main are close up against each other, it should be fairly short.
Would that warrant a community meeting at all, you think? Matt, I'll throw that at you too.
We, we did a neighborhood meeting for the whole neighborhood when we did, before we started phase one. And so this is just a continuation of that. And so we set up those communication mediums for that neighborhood meeting when we started the work. And that was, I want to say we did that last winter.
January.
January of 22, right? Well, we did, we, and that was invite, we invited the whole neighborhood, phase one and two to that and then set up the project page and the communication, the email list. And so we didn't feel the need to do another neighborhood meeting because we, they knew it was coming. And regarding the access too, is we do have some access points to the east where folks can get out, even if like that intersection that's just north of Clark is fully closed, you can still get east when that intersection is being done. So they'll be able to main, because we need that for public safety access for the whole neighborhood as well. So well, they'll have an ability to get out of the neighborhood and one direction or the other, either east or south.
Last question. Always like when these projects come in underbid from the engineering bid right there. There is about a 400,000 differential between the top and low bid, about 22% right there. Any reason why that is? I mean, I know it's a, any thoughts on that?
We can suspect some items because of that. The biggest, my thought is that those two other contractors already lined up some work, so they need a little more incentive to be able to go in there and do the work. Seeing both that J and K and Ontrack have lower bids and we're very tight with each other. Those are good indicators that there's nothing too odd sticking out.
Staff's comfortable with J and K? I know they've done some work for us before. You guys are comfortable with those guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Real quick, going back to the communications piece, how broadly is that letter being sent out? And, and you know, how far in advance are we trying to get that? Because you know, over a year ago, I'm, I'm not going to remember meeting, you know, specifically, potentially.
No, definitely. Um, those letters are actually in the process of getting sent out now, so they should all be out the door by the end of tomorrow.
Okay, and, and are they going just to the, like the, the houses directly around those intersections or is it going out more broadly? Because like, you know, like Eric was saying, you know, this is kind of a feeder for that area. So it'd be good to get kind of a broader letter group out.
Sure. Um, so they're going to both the phase one residents and the phase two residents. That should encompass most of the subdivision. I know Sunset can kind of bleed into the roads to the east there, but a lot of those residents would actually just probably go straight south and go on Clark from there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Jonathan on this?
I have a general one, and that is what kind of savings do you think is resulting from doing the patching versus a full replacement in that area? I can't tell from this how much relates to the water main replacement or, or the road. But if the majority of it was going to the road, that seems like that would be almost enough to do a replacement for that length. So I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question too. Um, and it's kind of just balancing out between doing the full reconstruction, doing patches. Uh, because obviously if you're going to go in and do the full reconstruction, we're putting down subbase everywhere. We're putting down our subdrain everywhere and then we're tying that in the storm sewer while as a patch, you're just going in localized areas and, you know, treating those individual spots instead of laying down all that new grade and earthwork.
I think maybe what Susan is curious, you know, what's the relative cost of doing everything versus patching? And I do know the magnitude, Jeff.
Well, if we get into complete reconstruction, you're going to be looking at the sanitary sewers, you're going to be looking at the place, the storm sewers. I mean, all, all those things are going to come into it. Uh, the total of this is 1.4 million for the water main and some pretty extensive patching. You look at the latest Clark Street bid for four blocks, and I don't know how many blocks are in here exactly, but probably six to eight.
Yeah, that's fairly close.
You're probably looking five million dollars worth of work to do a complete reconstruction for this. The minimum.
I would, I would say three times.
You know, so, you know, as we move forward with all our patching, we're doing everything we can to extend that. Uh, you know, we're coming up with the rising costs and everything. Trying to find money to keep up. Patching is going to be a big thing that we do. It may not give us a PCI of 80, but it's going to give us a very solid street. It's pothole free. It might ride just a little bit rougher, but it's, it's going to give us good, safe, quality streets for a long time. And we're going to have to do a lot of that probably in the upcoming years. You know, there's a few streets out there. We're still trying to identify funding to do complete reconstruction. Plus there's more coming up as we go along. So we're doing everything we can to stretch it as far as we can. This is, you know, I don't want to say it's extensive patching, but it's more than, it's just not pottles. It's cutting out full panels, putting back full depth concrete, uh, cutting out any place that there's bad spots that, that are, are causing us to have to go out and fill potholes. We don't want to be doing that if we don't have to. So, uh, there's a lot of work going into this and when we're done, similar to what you ended up with Woodcrest, this is a little more extensive than that as far as the size of the panels. Woodcrest was the last kind of Hail Mary to just, just cut out the very bad spots. Uh, this has got some more bigger full panel replacement in it and the whole intersections to go with it.
That's good though. That makes me feel a lot better because that road is pretty rough. And so I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to hear it.
And I wanted to hear, it's real money in terms of a difference, just to be able to tell that story to people. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Michael, to, to your point of sewer and other things underneath that you would have to replace on a full replacement, when are those scheduled to be replaced?
The sewer itself is not, we can put, we can put an additional liner in there and get some time out of it. What you get into is if you don't do that, you have to replace all the suit, the services because they're going to start going bad. So if you're going to tear out and put a 50, 70 year street in, you're going to have to have those sewer service replacements in there and dig into it. So you replace it as far as just saying, will the main itself last? Yeah, we can line it. We can get another 50 years out of it probably. But the services themselves will probably start having troubles in there and the residents will have to dig them up and cut holes in the brand new street if we don't replace them at the same time. We made the decision several years ago that when we replace, do full reconstruction, if it's a clay sewer, we will replace it. If it's a truss and PVC, we probably wouldn't have to. We could probably get enough life out of it. And those services haven't been causing us problems to where we could get, get away with not having to replace the sewer on a street that had that kind of pipe under it.
So in this case, you're saying that's what's there is those service lines aren't going to be affected in the next five or 10 years.
No.
Yeah, sewer is not on our list.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, sewer itself is not on our list, you know, the main itself. So it's an opportunity to buy some time.
Well, that's where I'm getting caught up on. Maybe we're just semantics or I've got the wrong definition in my head, but you keep saying the sewer, you back up and say the sewer main itself, but then you talk about the service lines for the residents is separate and could go bad at a different time than us redoing the sewer main, right? What is our estimate on all those sewer service lines of having to be dug up by the residents? Because that's not going to help us any if that's three to five years off, just because our main is 10 years off. We're going to have residents going through, cutting up the road for other reasons. We might as well take a whole look at this thing.
I can't forecast the services themselves, but I'm not saying three to five years necessarily, but I'm also saying they probably aren't going to go 50 to 60 if we put a new pavement over it. That's the range in there of difference. Like, you know, I don't expect anything in the next three to five years. If there was that kind of issues, we'd be having a lot of patches out there now. But more than likely before the 50 years is up, when the service life of this whole new pavement would be done, there'd be several problems in there that we would have to address or the residents would have to address.
And that's what I'm trying to stop us from having to do is have the residents address it when we're in there already, right? And just again, it's a little bit, and I get, I get the business, but it's a little self-serving because we can get a main to go 50 years. But we know the service lines to the houses and the residents are going to have to dig them up in three to five, 10 years.
Are those the ones that are on their property though? Is that what you're talking about?
About.
No, they come all the way out to the main.
Santeri Sewer.
Come all the way out to the main and we'd fix them at the time we do the main, we would, but if it didn't get done, then they would fix it, right?
There's some technology coming along.
Dig up all that.
Line those services now. And, and you know, some, some residents have done that, you know, where you can come and line backwards uh, into the service out in the street. Um, I'm guessing is the next 10, 20 years, it's going to get better all the time and those options will be there. It, it just, clay pipe is very brittle. As the ground shifts, it cracks and no matter what you have there, you have a chance for shifting. So that's why we would choose to replace it if it was going to be a new street on top, you know.
For example, too, one of the bids that we'll be taking next week is for some full reconstruction replacement on Lake Point Drive. That's got truss sewer underneath it. We're not proposing to do anything there because that sewer should last for at least one more road cycle. In terms of where you, we would have, you'd have to come back 50 years to replace the street. That would be the time when the sewer would be considered for replacement. So we're trying to stretch these dollars as far as we can because we know like when we go in to do 99th Court next year as a priority that the council moved up and that will be the full reconstruction. We will be replacing sewer there because now we're tearing up the street and that's an older sewer. It's not going to last that full 50 years that that road is going to be there. So then we're doing the service lines, we're doing, we're getting everything out from underneath the street, at least to the property lines. So then if a resident has to do something with the service line, they do not have to go into the street to get it, to, to replace it. And not having to tear up relatively new concrete.
As far as replacing the intersections, uh, there are very few places where you actually have private services in the intersections. So, you know, we feel fairly safe of that section not having to get impacted. It'd be between the two intersections where most of those would be.
Thanks.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing. Well done tonight.
Right.
Further discussion. Hearing none, would the council please vote on closing the public hearing? And will clerk please post that vote? Motion to close public hearing passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
The motion is second to approve plans and specs. Further discussion? Seeing none? Would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? Plans and specs are approved by a vote of five to zero.
Who'd receive the bids?
Second.
We have motion second to receive the bids. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? Bids.
Jeff, thanks.
Are received by a vote of five to zero.
Move a resolution awarding the contract to J and K Contracting.
Motion is second to award the contract to J and K. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Jonathan. Water irrigation. Liz.
I'm back again. Thank you. Um, good evening again. And if you recall back in October, staff presented the history of the water irrigation rates, the methodology, and provided some options for you on the tiered, tiered rate structure. Your feedback and guidance helped staff put together the policy statement and the rate summaries that were in your packet. With your approval tonight, staff will draft the utility ordinances and that will be presented to the council after the city's budget is approved. So, um, there was another note I wanted to just, um, share with you in the synopsis, and that is the desire, once we craft the ordinances, is to, um, begin billing per 100 gallons as you, if you were able to, to look at that. Um, right now, we're currently, uh, billing at 1,000 gallons and so it would be very accurate as to the usage. So that'd be very helpful to staff.
Is that just for irrigation?
Uh, it would both be water and sewer.
Oh.
To, for that last point, yes.
The ordinances would still have a per thousand gallon rate, but we would bill it at 100 gallon increments.
Not just irrigation, water, sewer, but all water.
All water.
Down to 100, okay, right.
I was really pleased that you made that move. I think it's much more reflective actual usage. It's not just kind of a swag anymore and, and I was pleased to see that. Thank you.
Further questions?
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the resolution. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That resolution passes by a vote of five to zero. Pete, stormwater.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight you have the policy statement document that substantially not changed since the last time you saw it. The change that was requested had to do with how we handle private streets for homeowners associations. The policy document now acknowledges that the common areas like pool decks and courtyards will be included in the calculation of total square feet of impervious and then the, the bill for those square feet of impervious will be sent directly to the HOA, not distributed out for the calculation of square feet of impervious for each of the residential units. Private streets will not be included in any of those calculations. One other point to note, uh, so we don't have to keep coming back to this policy document year over year over year as we adjust rates. We've decided to go ahead and move the actual tier calculations into a separate portion of the sort of ordinance language which we'll be drafting and then bring to all of you for approval as we get later into the spring and through the rest of the budget building process.
Right. Questions for Pete?
I just have one minor quibble on the policy priorities, number three, protect water quality. We don't say how, how this is protecting water quality. We say it in the other, but I don't know how this is actually protecting water quality. It just says that we are. So if we could just add a sentence or two that says how we're protecting it?
Yeah, and I think it's multiple dimensions. The first thing that comes to mind for me would be to say such the effect that when water moves, stormwater moves, it carries erosive power and carries also everything that's on those streets. So when that gets into our stormwater conveyance system and ultimately makes its way down to Walnut Creek, it's taking those pollutants with it.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't think we need a long paragraph. It just, when I read it, I didn't like, well, I, I don't know what it, what we're doing or why.
Are you okay with the resolution allowing Pete to?
Yes.
Give a sentence or two.
Yeah, I don't need to.
But you're wanting something.
Yeah, just like something in there that explains how, how we're doing it.
Defines it.
Yeah, that through this policy, right?
Chaos or some.
Yeah, the council's comfortable with it. We can add a sentence or two in your, in your motion tonight and then share that with you.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Email.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. Move the resolution.
Thank you.
I second that very clear motion.
So we have a resolution to approve stormwater utility with slight clarification on the point. Council member identified. Hearing nothing further. Would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? Passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Honor.
Richard, Indian Hills Trail Alignment.
All right, thank you. So tonight is kind of our next check-in point in regards to the work in Indian Hills Woods. We had a discussion a few months back about the trail alignment and what we wanted to see and kind of some direction that's the council gave to staff on how do you wanted us to approach that. So just a quick recap of that, what we heard last time. So the map on the right is the work that we did with the residents out there over the last 12 to 18 months. It really talks about how we're going to restore that property once the creek work is done. And then what was the trail alignment look like? So a couple, a couple of things here, just kind of going through that. There is existing bridge here that is the walk route between Indian Hills between 96th and 97th. We talked about that getting replaced. So that was something that we all concurred on is needed to be done with a modern kind of prefabricated bridge that you see a lot of the creek crossings here on Walnut Creek. But there were concerns with what the proposal was here, um, just east and west of 98th Street. The way we kind of laid it out at that time was to cross from the north side of the creek to the south side of the creek, east of 98th Street, cross 98th Street, and then we'd have to cross with another bridge just west of that. There was concerns from the council about the cost to do a traditional bridge. One of the things we saw support for was resident requests to change that from a paved trail to a crushed limestone trail and then support for extending the trail all the way to 100th Street. So that's kind of a recap of what we heard the last time we talked. So tonight, um, just kind of want to talk about what our recommendation is moving forward for the, the trail alignment to kind of mitigate some of those bridges. So the overall kind of recommended route here is on the right. So the red is the proposed trail route. The yellow star is where that bridge would be that needs to be replaced. The green is existing concrete sidewalk. We're going to hopefully work to widen that a little bit, just make it a little bit easier for maintenance as well as make a little bit better for the amount of people that walk through there. Right now it's three and a half to four feet wide. But we do have the ability, um, through a 10-foot ownership between the houses that we could go a little bit wider, make it easier for maintenance and just allow for more people to walk through there.
Suggesting then 10 feet, eight feet, six feet?
Um, I think at the minimum would be six, eight would be ideal, um, but we'll just have to kind of work it out once we get an engineer on board to, to figure out what we can actually do there with graves and the way all the houses work through there, but the hope is six. So then we kind of work our way over to 98th Street here, and this is kind of what we're proposing is to take the trail from the north side, uh, find a way either through a short culvert extension here on the east side of 98th Street or potentially coming up to the sidewalk and widening that and jogging down here just a little bit south. That eliminates the bridge that what we had proposed over here in the past. And then by doing that, either through a widened sidewalk or potentially this culvert extension, we get able to cross the street perpendicular to the north side of the creek here and eliminate the crossing that was proposed here of the creek. We have enough space between the, the private property here as well as where the, the culvert and the creek are that we could sneak the trail in here. The grades are in pretty good shape. So it creates a, a, a good alternative for a trail alignment through there and eliminates a lot of the cost that would have been with the two bridges. There are some things that we would have to kind of investigate. So, um, with a culvert extension, in my opinion, that would be the priority or at least my highest, you know, what I think is the best solution there. But we need to make sure we do a little bit investigating on whether or not an extension like that would impact the recently done creek work that we need to do. So there'd be a little bit of work that we need to dig into, but the alternative, if that created too many problems, is to come up, widen the sidewalk and jog to the south and then cross right here. So. So that's kind of our proposal. Love to get some feedback from the council on that and see if you think we're going in the right direction.
We wouldn't need that little rock crossing that we have right now. Would that still be there, Richard, or would it be?
Yes, we would probably leave that there. Yeah, it's a great little small crossing that people can use. It's not, you know, people don't have to use it. They could just go to the north and cross there, but I think it provides a little bit of amenity for people that want a little bit of unique experience.
This trail crossing would just be on the north end of that?
Yep. Yeah, we have approximately anywhere from 14 to 20 feet between the property line to the north and where the creek and the culvert are. So we have plenty of room to be able to sneak in there.
My opinion, with Eric, I would like to continue to see those crossings throughout our system, even on the other side of the original. You know, that you could come over here on the east side down over and then still go across if you want. You know, you see a lot of people using that old trail between 86th and 100th. Where the old trail used to come through, they're still using that as a bike trail.
Well, absolutely. We're looking at maybe one kind of right before it, the trail goes east, west, and north, south. Maybe bringing one down there. The way it was designed with the stream work is provide an opportunity to maybe take a little mulch path down there, have a few boulders, and then you could kind of mulch path back to the west. So there is absolutely opportunities for that.
Go ahead, did you have some?
No, go ahead.
So a couple of questions, Richard. So on the west side, moving that trail a little to the north, you said we got 14 to 20 feet before we get to the property line of that resident right there at the corner on Carpenter. I think he has like a retaining wall back there. How close are we to buttressing up against that? Because we want to keep some space.
I don't think we know at this point yet. One of the things that we're going to need to do when we start to get into the design a little bit more of this is work specifically with that property owner, because perhaps when the actual trail design is, maybe that retaining wall's not needed there anymore. But we work with him on maybe a landscape buffer between his property. One of the things he, I know, has peppered a lot of city staff and probably some of you with is concerns that floodwater backs up into his property. Perhaps this even provides an opportunity to, in the way that the trail's designed, to maybe, you know, alleviate some of his concerns on that. So we'll have some work to do with him and we'll, because of how close it comes specifically to him, we'll have, definitely be working with him throughout this process.
That's good. I think that's a good thing. I have had multiple conversations with him, and he's a very thoughtful guy, you know, and, you know, just wants to kind of maintain the, the natural aesthetics back there without it intruding on, on his property. To your point about the flooding, so if we're extending the culvert, is, what does that do? Because he, he has said that there have been multiple instances where that kind of basin fills up there on the street. Will that exacerbate that problem by extending? Because it seems, just kind of logically thinking, if you extend it, it's going to make it worse.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer to that question, but that's a question we will answer before we say, hey, we can or can't extend the culvert. But it's absolutely, so I've kind of initiated some initial discussions with Ray and Jim, kind of start to talk about what are some of those concerns? And that's absolutely one of them.
What's the timing on all this then?
So, yep, I'll jump onto the next slide. No, you're good. So the next steps would be potentially as early as your next meeting or the meeting, first meeting in March, we would bring a contract forward to you for the trail design and construction. That was where we'd answer some of those questions, get this trail-specific design taken care of and getting ready for that to bid. A little bit after that, we will be sending a letter out to the neighbors about all the upcoming projects, the little bit of stream work that needs to be done here this fall, the public works still needs to do, all the planting that we're going to be doing this spring and summer, all the shrubs and trees, but also sitting down with any individual property owners that's interested in talking about what the buffer looks like behind their house. We think some people will just be okay with, you know, hey, I want the medium or the light buffer. Others are going to want to sit down and have some talks. So we're going to be working on that this spring to get that out and have those discussions. Then probably in May or June is when we'll start the planting out there. One of the things we want to do is really engage that neighborhood, probably with volunteers, be willing to come out and help us plant them, similar to how we have done with a lot of our tree planting projects. Engage them, see if they come out and help improve that space. And then finally, working towards trail construction. Right now, my guess is that's probably starting in July or August, but once we kind of get into some of this, we'll be able to give you a little bit better of a refined schedule.
And is that going to require more removal of trees on the, on the western portion of that?
There may be a few small trees right up against 98th Street there, coming west over to that where there may need to be some removals, but for the most part, there's a pretty wide path that winds through there west of 98th.
Okay, good. This last week, there were a few other trees that had to be removed that you may have heard about from some constituents. One of the, a couple of those, I believe, had limb hazards.
Yes, so.
Some problems, and then the others were invasives that we would want to remove and replace with healthier and, or desirable species through this project.
Yep, so what I can kind of do is, like what Pete was just talking about. So right along here, along the south side of the creek on the east-west section there, east of 98th Street, that is an area that didn't have a lot of removals as part of the creek project. But as part of this project to identify what is the long-term health of this space look like, identified invasive trees that need to be removed there. So there was a combination of Tree of Heaven that had kind of started to take over in that area there. There was some ash trees that are now dead that need to be removed, and there were some mulberry trees that needed to be removed. So staff started that process last fall by girdling the trees to try to kill them. The Tree of Heaven is just notoriously difficult to kill without more and more of them popping up because they kind of spread out with suckers from their roots. And so girdling them is a great way to start to hopefully kill it before you actually take it down. So they did that process in the fall, and then they came back probably last week to do the removals, which triggered the comment that Pete was talking about.
What's your estimate, Richard, for, will this project, overall project in Indian Hills, be completed in 23, or are we going to get it in 24? What's your thoughts?
It's going to really depend on whether, what weather looks like this fall as for the trail construction. Really, the biggest impacts to that will be the ability to get the bridge in there because you need to dig down and need things dry. But for the most part, the rest of the trail surface is pretty routine. It's pretty much already graded through there, so it's not an overly complex project. I mean, I think the hope is that we'll be wrapped up by this fall, but if we get a really wet fall, we could be into the spring.
You know, it's important, and you guys are doing a good job with, with community engagement with all the neighbors. I know it's been a long slog right here, but I like the out-of-the-box thinking on, on the culvert and, and be able to reline that trail with the crushed limestone, satisfies a lot of the neighbors' concerns. And, you know, always like to save money on those bridges. So overall, you guys are doing a good job. Appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
We're also seeing some opportunities to do some storytelling around this project, not just locally, but also in some of the professional groups that Public Works Team touches and groups that I happen to be a part of as well. This has been a lot of careful thought and excellent execution to this point. Once the project's done, we'll be able to tell a good story about it.
Agreed.
Other comments or questions? About the Indian Hills Trail?
Richard, did you share the timing for some of our meetings that we're setting up with those individual neighbors? I think we've got.
Yeah, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of March and April is when we'll be offering them opportunities to meet with our staff, just kind of sit down and talk about.
I'm sure this is the council, I like to, I like to attend some of those.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jeff Tealand is going to be organizing much of that since he'll be most intimately connected to the purchase of the trees and taking that contract.
Will those be on site?
Sure, I get those dates and I'll put.
Yeah.
The update.
We haven't made a decision.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
I'm sorry, are they, are you planning on doing those meetings on site or here at C home?
So they, it'll really be up to them. One of the things we want to do is kind of offer maximum flexibility. The letter that goes out will offer, say, hey, we have these types of buffer that are opportunity for you. Do you just want to select one? Send us an email. Do you want us to come out and talk to you onsite at your property? We'll do that. So it's probably going to be a mix and a combination, and some people we may not, just may not hear from. That's entirely possible. But we, I would expect there's probably about 10 to 15 that will want to have individual sit downs with them. And at that point, we will go out to their house and probably walk in the backyard with them to kind of talk about the buffer and kind of how they want to see that done.
Jeff Carter offered to have a neighborhood.
Sure he did.
So yeah, it'll be, just be a comment. I think it's just going to be a combination of things to kind of meet them, what, at what works best for them.
Right, good.
Hearing no other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next, we'll move into the strategic plan quarterly update.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just going to touch on a few items and then see if there's any questions from council on any other specific items, but really hitting the, the top priority items and where we're at. Of course, we talked a, a little bit here recently about the Lanin and Harbach, our request for proposals for the design team. That'll be going out here to secure that team for the first phase of reconstruction of Lanin Park and a lot of other activities that were pretty much the implement, the first implementation steps of the 86th Street Neighborhood Plan. So that is moving forward. Greenbelt Landing, I made the council aware that we did have, we are working on an agreement of a substantial donation to that project that really puts it over the top for us related to the playgrounds. We hope to, the next couple of meetings, if it's not ready by the next meeting, but hopefully that first meeting in March, coming back with the formal agreement, that this will really be the lead donor for the Greenbelt Landing project and puts us in a great position to then bring the site plan to you and the construction documents and be bidding that project this year. So really, you know, excited about that, where we're at with that project right now. We're also in the process of submitting other grant applications to Prairie Meadows and others to fill that, what would be left of that little bit of gap to, for the 100% funding of the project. So Hickman Interchange, we talked about that here very recently with moving forward the formal design process with the City of Urbendale and the DOT, with Snyder and Associates leading that effort. You'll probably see an action item and consent on your next agenda of that warrant study that we talked about at 108th and Hickman to start evaluating whether or not it'll be appropriate to, to cut off the frontage road that hits 111th there at Hickman and what impacts that would have for a future traffic signal at 108th. So we have some action steps there. And then, of course, we talked about the communications position the last council meeting and the council meeting in December. So a lot of these top priority items are moving forward. What you will see in March, more likely, is a number of the different components of the employee recruitment retention project that I know I've been talking with the Personnel Committee about. Want to circle back with them on some specific details, bring that forward to the full council. Of course, as I mentioned last week, we have some placeholders in the budget for these items, but wanted to get into the detail with you on that next month. One other thing that you'll start to see on action items coming up, setting public hearings is the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. This is up, we talked a lot about this at the CIP workshop in November. This will be kind of the first step. I have, I imagine we'll have multiple years of amending this urban renewal plan. Again, depending on if the legislature makes any changes to the urban renewal law, that may be a different conversation, but I think it's going to be critical this year to, to make these updates to the plan. That'll be the next couple of months. We'll be talking about that and going through the formal updating process to amend that plan. Yeah, your next council meeting, I know one item that we talked quite a bit about it, your strategic planning last August, was housing, particularly housing in the 86th Street Neighborhood. One of the high, high priority items that you all prioritized was, what could the city do with some of these homes that are being bought out in the flood-prone property area that aren't necessarily needed to be demolished right now? And Doug and his team will be coming back with their evaluation of whether the city wants to get into the rental business with some of those properties. That was the item that was prioritized. So we'll be bringing that forward.
I hear Airbnbs are pretty popular these days.
And as I mentioned last week, the West Side 2080 Agreement negotiations are ongoing. Waiting to hear back from West Des Moines on that. And obviously, that was a critical budget item as we talked about last week. Finally, some key points. Fire chief recruitment, again, we're in the middle of that with, and we have about two, a little over two weeks left on that application period, and the recruiter is giving us regular updates on the applications that we're seeing there. So anticipate you seeing some updates here very soon on that. Also, haven't heard anything new yet on the regional water. We should be seeing a new 2080 draft here very soon from the original one that we got last year, and then everybody provided comments back. So there'll be some, I would imagine, some lifting here in the winter, early spring on that significant arrangement for a new regional water production utility and, and related board of governors. And then lastly, I wanted to mention too, is the staff continues to work on tweaks particularly related to, for facilities related to security and safety. And so a, a small staff team has been working on and led by Dennis Harkin, working with Baker Group and some design consultants on adding security cameras, particularly externally to this building that are, are things that we can maintain, even if we do significant renovations to the interior of this building, and then access control and security at Parks Maintenance where it doesn't exist today, and really trying to get us over to the same platforms on access control and security that we have at the new public safety building. And we've talked about that of these more smaller security enhancements to facilities to put us in a, in a better posture here. Ultimately, the, the security solution for this building is going to require the significant renovations that I know we talked about last November, and we'll continue to bring that forward to you as a part of that Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, but also some things that we can do along the way as well. The Greenbelt Landing project factors into that. Also, with the special events building or community center and making some modifications there. So we're trying to get ourselves to one singular system for access control and security. And so those are just some items that I wanted to highlight. Be happy to take any questions or comments on any of the items that are on the quarterly update.
Must have covered it pretty well. I don't hear any questions. Pretty good. We'll move on to reports. Pete?
One item tonight, Your Honor. We're working to get ready for our neighborhood meeting for the Little Walnut Creek Sewer Project. You may have heard from constituents who received mail that with the logos of Urbendale, Clive, and Waki all at the top, we're collaborating to put together the best possible meeting we can to introduce this project. RSVP count for in-person is currently less than five, although I expect that number to change. Tough to bring people out in the middle of February.
What's the date and time and place on that, Pete?
15th, Wednesday, Schuler Elementary Media Center, 6 o'clock. Over 10. We would like, would like to participate by Zoom, so we'll have a Zoom option for folks to learn more about it. Last night, from about 5 till 7, I made phone calls though to folks who live on the north side of the creek from our easternmost border to Alice's Road. So that they, because these are the folks for the sewer construction who are going to most immediately see things in their backyards, trees going down and heavy equipment in the area. As we go into the restoration and the stream bank stabilization, folks on both the south side and the north side of the creek will be seeing some effects. But at least for prioritizing calls, I'm starting with those folks who are most immediately going to be close to the action.
Pete, that's, that's a good call right there.
Pete, that's, that's a good call right there. One thing we've seen in the past is there's major reconstruction folks and well, I didn't know and I didn't read this and I didn't get the postcard and I forgot to tend this. So the more touches or reaching out we can do to solidify our communication efforts, obviously the better.
And for those who don't get the word and are surprised, we'll meet them where they're at because we want them to have accurate information and want them ultimately to understand while we're doing this and appreciate that at the end of the day, it's going to be a better amenity, better trail connections. Connected to better vehicle transportation as we get into Alice's Road. And then strong infrastructure that's going to serve those growing Waki neighborhoods and the businesses that they'll all be visiting probably. As they hopefully have good experiences as families out in Clive's neighborhoods. So we'll keep, we'll keep pressing along. For anybody who does have questions about the project but can't come to the meeting, they can come directly to me and I can help them get information. But I'd like to get as many folks as possible signed up for our project distribution list. The email address we're using for that is little walnut creek at city of clive.com. And we'll include that link in our Friday email so that you can share it with anybody who has questions. They send an email to that account, they'll get added to the distribution list. More to come.
Anything else, Pete?
No, Your Honor.
Recon.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have his report. Oh, okay. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that.
All right, MPO, we had MPO exec yesterday, another marathon, MPO exec session. I think we're getting a little closer to some consensus on the mission and the role of the MPO and the metro. Mayor, you would hate these meetings because we go down these rabbit holes and we spend twenty minutes down the rabbit holes and then come back. But so there's a lot, still a lot of strong opinions there, but I think we're kind of getting to a verbal consensus and now it's a matter of documenting it. We're going to create something of a decision tree as to here's how we're going to make the decisions as to whether the MPO takes on these different projects or not. So I think we're getting closer, but we've still got a little ways to go to get that fully documented. And then last thing. I was renominated for the Secretary Treasurer position at MPO. Mayor Andaway will be Chair, Steph Reva from Norwalk will be Vice Chair, and then I'll be Secretary Treasurer for another year. So.
Have they voted on you yet?
So policy means exec voted and that passed and then policy will vote next week. So it'll be official as of next week. And the best part of it was that because, because we're grouped with other communities and in our different groupings. The, the city of Waki had to vote and so that meant Charlie Buttonberg had to vote for me to be Secretary Treasurer. So I get, I take great happiness out of that.
Councilman, last time you reported on this, you had some information to share about MIPA in particular. Is there any, I ask only because they staff there have reached out to me as well.
Yeah, so that's one of those big rabbit holes that we go down. There, there's the, the creation of MIPA has kind of convoluted the finances of the MPO because their finances are now integrated into the MPOs and you know, they have their own staff that in theory they're paying for their one staff member. But again, that's folded in under the MPO. The idea is to kind of offload some of these peripheral type projects like housing to MIPA, which is going to require more staff and more bandwidth. So, okay, how do we separate that out? We have some members who want to do it today. You know, I'm trying to play middle ground where we need a transition plan to do this. We can't, we made an, you know, an agreement to stand them up. So we need, you know, we need to honor that and create, you know, a transition plan to allow them to kind of disaggregate from the MPO.
But Ted, why not? Why not do both, right? When you, when I hear integrated into the financials. It made me shiver, right? Why not stand them up with a loan or a cash upfront or something, but being too parallel accounting, right, that they're here and you're here, you can help them financially, that's fine, right? But you'll never be able to pull them back out. I mean, we're looking at WRA right now, right? It's, WRA is looking at the fact of do we pull out of what it looks like today? And move to something more like a Dart or a Metro Wastatory. How would you ever remove all those Des Moines employees? At this point is the biggest headache. The deeper you get into that. I just see that as a nightmare.
Yeah, I mean, it has a lot of potential to support. Yeah, I agree. And that, that, those are good points. And, and yeah, I'll, I'll bring those up. I hadn't thought about that, but but that's causing a lot of angst and you've got certain members who are, you know, threatening to pull out of MIPA altogether. By July one, when it renews, which then changes the finances for the rest of us, you know, so. And pretty significantly because these are big players. So, so that's a lot of what we're working through. That's probably a little bit more complex than just what's the mission of the MPO. I think we've got some, some pretty good consensus. It's never going to be a hundred percent, but certainly exec, I think is pretty unified on, on where that needs to go, but dealing with, with MIPA is a big challenge that we're trying to work through, so.
And would that still require eighteen month notice from the time they vote before they can actually get out or do you?
I don't think so, not from, I could be wrong. I don't want to mistake, but according to these folks, they're not going to renew effective July first, so.
I've been hearing from those saying, I assume they're the same.
It's the same.
They're saying that MIPA is, you know, they're not going to follow the eighteen month rule that they would with MPO with MIPA because of how it slid in there.
Right.
And of under the radar and again, I think some would be okay if it was a hard split and then loans or money was given to that organization. Let it run it red, but at least you know.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that. That's a possibility.
Some of these objectors are very vocal, are very vocal, and they approved it earlier, had they not?
But under, if you listen to it, under different pretenses, right? And, 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 you know, the way, the way it was sold versus the way it's executing are two very different things. And, and I do agree with them on that. It was, the way it was framed to us and certainly to the MPO was very different than kind of the way the mission is starting to flesh out, so.
Appreciate that, Eric.
Floors Direct had their ten year ribbon cutting today with the chamber. It's nice to see a business reinvest as much as they have. So very successful. So it's a love to see that happen.
Thank you. Anything else? And did you say Mark Ribber was on the call?
Yes.
Well, just wanted to thank him for joining us last night at our Metro Mayor's, our MyLog meeting. We were at the Academy. And so it was a very interesting evening to learn about all the renovations, all the training and all the challenges and everything else they're, they're dealing with. And one of the things they have a real need for is volunteers who want to be drunk. I was not familiar with this program. Maybe some of you are, I don't know.
They aren't, but they would like more info.
You know, for the, for the training youngsters. Apparently you start drinking earlier in the day and then they, you know, they, they, you get drunk and they, they pick you up and they take you home. So you're safe that way. But then the officers are able to practice the sobriety test.
And tasers.
So anyway, I wanted to thank the lieutenant for joining us. Nice TV. And you're welcome to make any additional comments, Lieutenant.
One more, John, we set Lieutenant up as a co-host. If you are able to do that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can sign you all up. It's a good time, so come on down. Send me an email, we'll get you signed up.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Well, good to see a number of you at the Bravo event where we had a chance to celebrate the arts and culture in the Des Moines metro. This week we had our monthly Economic Vitality Committee meeting. But unfortunately, it was short-lived because attendance was really low. We'd known that several people were ill or had conflicts, but given the importance of the planned presentation to help everybody understand what is proposed for the eastern neighborhoods, we decided to postpone that for next month and we're going to try a Zoom meeting for that one. Not intending to always meet that way, but to take advantage of everyone's busy schedule. It's kind of a good way to do it. And most of that conversation will be presentation oriented. So we'll be giving that a try.
Thanks, Susan.
That's it.
Michael, you have something on Dart? Yeah. How funny that happened on his first month. I got, the alternate got called in. Couple of big things. So Dart's been struggling with the funding of a new building, right? They did go ahead and vote to hire a CMA. DCI with a maximum dollar amount. Behind that to get them through these next kind of construction design pieces, timing and all that. I say interesting because they really don't have a piece of land tied down yet. Nor the financing, but they think this will bring them through July. By July, they'll know if they get two more grants. Federal grant and another grant that would get them to about sixty-five to seventy percent of the way on the funding. There is a little discussion what that funding is. It used to be sixty million. It was an eighty-five million. They're sticking at eighty-five million plus. What I'm hearing is ninety-eight million for this building now. So it is creeped. I was a little cautious of throwing the vote in to continue it without what Shri Khan's been asking for. And I've been asking for a parallel budget of if the state legislators do not fund in the way they want them to fund, what will happen? They see this as a win, a bill. Senate, Senate Bill one-one-two-five came out by Dawson. And inside that fit Senate, it's a giant omnibus bill. Also deals with lost and, and removing loss from the cities and bringing it statewide. But buried in it is also a piece that mentions franchise fees. It allows cities to increase their franchise fee from five percent to seven point five percent without a special election, but only cities that are two hundred thousand population or above. So we thought maybe that was geared towards maybe one city. Dart wanted a vote, really wanted a vote from the Commissioners yesterday. Or Tuesday, and I was pretty impressed that I didn't hear one Commissioner ready to vote this way. Wants to push the rest of the cities to ask for that for them, to lower the population from two hundred thousand to whatever your population might be, right? And allow any cities within that Dart border to go up two point five percent. Some like Johnston with the mayor there saying she doesn't have a franchise fee. How would that work? What if she wanted to bring in one percent franchise fee with the one percent go to who? You'd have to bring it to five percent to only then go to seven and a half to get a piece of it. Those cities that don't have it are philosophically against franchise fees. Therefore, they would never go to the two point five percent. I guess I didn't see how it would hurt, but I said I was no way ready to be in favor or against this thing without talking to you all. Urbendale set the stage for that as well. So did Ankeny and then it just filed in after that. Des Moines, interesting enough, Josh Mandelbaum was there and the mayor was in the audience. Neither one of them spoke in favor or against it. So it's a little tough, especially when I said this sounds like a Des Moines vote. Not us. So they're wanting our feedback if we're willing or want them to go back up to Dawson and ask for it to be put in for asking the adjust, adjustment to the population threshold, threshold. Don't know if today's the time to talk about that or, but they are in a hurry. You know, I, I had mentioned Paula, Karen Field mentioned. Ross from Pleasant Hill mentioned, so did Ankeny from Kelly Whitey. That perhaps if they allowed us to go to seven and a half, but didn't tie it to transportation. Let the cities decide where their money goes, especially when you're stripping them of every other revenue stream everywhere else. And if we so choose to go to six, then we can give one percent to to Dart, or we can give it to the zoo, or we can give, we can give it to whatever you want, right, roads or. So that's what they're asking. I'm afraid if we don't weigh in and others do, they may take the lead of some and start lobbying that way. And I don't know which way it's going to go. I really don't. I mean, I think Kelly is set in her. No. But what the lobbyist was saying was, as they were lobbying us, the same, what's it hurt? You know, it doesn't force you to go to seven and a half. You'd still have to have another vote to go to seven and a half. It just gives you the ability to go to seven and a half. I had mentioned, and I'll stop. I had mentioned, there's a hundred other organizations that would like to line up for a bill like this.
Give the council some context of levy equivalent and revenue that a franchise fee increase would generate. I did the math quick on the, it's roughly like sixty cents or fifty-nine cents, I think, is the Dart levy in Clive. Generates about a million bucks a year. If you, if we were to raise our franchise fee to seven and a half percent, so we currently charge five today and all that five percent goes towards road rehab. It would, it would not cover that. We generate about one point four million. Five percent, so seven hundred thousand. So it wouldn't be a full replacement. You would still have some levy. Dart levy, just to provide a perspective on it. I, and I don't know if Councilman McCoy, this was a part of the discussion at all of I wonder if you go down this path, would there be a component of it that of then the Dart levy goes away in all these communities and then they're, you know, you trade one for the other. Where you don't have a property tax levy anymore if the franchise fee revenue. And then Dart just, that's all they get and there's no authority to levy a property tax levy because I think from a resident standpoint to see that go off a property tax bill. The one other thing I would mention is that franchise fee, franchise fees are paid by tax exempt properties in terms of their energy usage. So you have churches, schools.
Renters too.
While they, I mean theoretically, they pay a property tax through their rent. Theoretically, yeah. Anything, anything that's tax exempt does pay a franchise fee, whereas they don't necessarily pay, they're exempt from property taxes. So you, you spread it across to bigger pool. I mean, it's not a huge, it's a big thing for Des Moines because they have a very substantial amount of tax exempt properties. It's a, it's quite a bit smaller for us as a percentage of our overall value, but just some things to think about in this discussion. It isn't a dollar for dollar. But it's close. And so would it be desire desirable for a lot of these suburban communities to say, okay, if we're going to go to the franchise fee route, then property tax levy for Dart goes away in all these communities and can't come back. And then that's the revenue that Dart has. Anyway, just some food for thought.
So Michael, what is your specific question, whether or not we? Do we, do we, does this city want to add their name to allowing us to have a seven and a half percent? Or reducing transit levies? It goes towards reducing transit levies. Because right now it's, it's written specifically allows cities with the population that exceeds two hundred thousand to increase their franchise fee to seven and a half without a special election. Do we want to add our name to that and ask for that population to be brought down? So that us and Ankeny and Urbendale and others can choose to do two point five percent, but it would be locked to transit. It would, it must be used to lower transit property tax levies. So that answers your question.
Well, I have a thought and that is I definitely like the opportunity to diversify revenue stream. But I think it should be able to be a choice on use of the funds.
So more, more flexibility.
More flexibility, not necessarily just tied to transit.
Yeah, I agree with Susan. I'm a hundred percent agree.
Recon, any thoughts? We're advocating flexibility here.
Yeah, I was talking on mute for a little bit there. Yeah, what, what Susan was saying is, is kind of what, what I was trying to say, but my microphone wasn't cooperating. I, I do wonder how practical that is though, seeing what we're seeing from the state legislature as far as taking away that flexibility. So it may just be kind of, as much as we'd all like to see it, I just, I don't know if it's practical to, to put our eggs in that basket, I guess.
Some think that it's a very good chance that this bill could be passed as it's written. And maybe you, you leave it alone and let Des Moines have that ability. They had a seven and a half percent on some lost legislation to pay for legislation or, I'm sorry, litigation. At some point was allowed to go to seven and a half percent to pay for litigation. I think it was on.
Tort, there was a tort judgment. Well, no, it was, it was on the actual franchise fee that it was, they were illegal. Alleged, you know, I can't remember all the documents, but they were above their, thank you, improper, they had to pay back.
So some are thinking they're allowing Des Moines to go to the seven and a half because they've already been there before. And but it sounds like this group is in favor of it if there is flexibility of using the two and a half percent and it's not tied to transit.
I'm fine with that.
Not restricted to.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be locked in. I'm okay with that. I just don't like the lock in on the two and a half percent for transit.
It certainly included transit, but.
Absolutely.
What if, just curious, how would the council feel about if, if it was transportation related? Public transits within that, I mean, right now you're using the entire five percent specifically for roads. What if it stayed in the, what if it stayed in the roadway transportation category?
I'd be fine with that.
Would that be, I'm just thinking about, I don't think, I don't think, I agree with Freecon. I don't think the legislature is going to give you, give us probably the ability to have the full flexibility, but is there a certain category? And I know this council, we just talked about it, right? We're always talking about more road money is if it stayed in the transportation realm.
It's always transportation is not defined as MPO of like rafts. Dig out, dug out boats.
Public transit and service transportation.
Yeah, man, I think that's a good job.
Just a suggestion.
That gives us, that gives us flexibility on that, but also focusing on various levels of transportation. I'm fine with that.
And it's something every city is wrestling with.
Yeah, for sure.
I'll pass that along. And the reason we probably couldn't wait, this is gonna have, this is probably gonna go through quick in the next couple of weeks if it goes. And also then my last thing is, is it one eighty one?
Senate file one eighty one, that's the residential rollback that I talked about last week. Yeah.
Yeah. That they lobbyists were telling Dart to put their budget towards knowing that that's gonna pass.
Yeah, the past House Subcommittee and Ways and Means, it hasn't been taken up by the House chamber yet. Didn't get taken up today, I don't think, but I would assume it's next week and the governor signs it.
And how much it hit, is that for Dart?
Not as big as you think.
Two hundred, I think it was. Oh, but two hundred of them right now is, might as well be twenty million. You know, I mean, it, it upsets the apple cart for them. Especially if they don't have a plan for this next five years, which is really worrying me, but they don't. But you can pass the worry on to Freecon for the next.
I tried.
I think, I think Michael did a great job. Let's just let that ride a little.
You know, it's ironic that the franchise fee discussion is coming up because when Des Moines ended up basically being told they didn't appropriately impose it. I just remind you that the reason they did was because of the legislature making the cuts they did after budgets were certified back in two thousand and three. And here we go again, they're at least giving us time to adjust to it. But I attended a legislative update that Master Builders hosted earlier this week. And it was quite frustrating to hear one of the legislators just espousing the fact that the reason the state is in such good shape is because we have a good diversified revenue stream at the state level. And they love to just berate us over property taxes and they've eliminated literally everything else. So it's just, and, and they do not understand how the property tax system works. But I will tell you that I had a call from a former very active League of Cities board member who said that the city managers across the state are not pleased with the representation of cities by the league this year and kind of leading up to this year. So there's supposed to be a meeting that's happening with the director of the league on tomorrow to, you know, they've already had some initial discussions, but not, not happy.
I've heard the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. And I was concerned too, to find out that as of last Friday, people who would normally be allies to speak up for cities literally did not understand that there would be an impact to cities if the local option sales tax were taken away and then we got five eighths percent of it back. You know, so they could take the three eights to do the, I will, because they were being told by Senator Dawson and others that because the state would start collecting that tax on internet sales, it would make up for the difference. And I said, they already collected on internet sales and even if there were a few vendors that hadn't been collecting it appropriately and could never make up for the three eights. And that this issue has been out there long enough that they, all of our allies should know that from the league and that hadn't been appropriately conveyed to anybody. And I've had a hard time getting the league to say what they're doing to try to help people understand it now. So I, I, I'm very concerned about that part of what's in Senate Study Bill eleven twenty five.
To add some additional context, starting this year, I joined the Legislative Affairs Committee for the league. And as part of that, on Monday mornings, we start with a review of what had happened the previous week or any legislation that's related to affecting cities. We've now been living with these proposed pieces of Senate legislation for a week. And I believe they were introduced a week ago this, tomorrow.
We go today.
Yeah, we could go today. When we convened, you know, the, the league staff were working diligently over the weekend, taking as many hours as they could to understand some very, very complex legislation at that point. And the call, which is an interesting mix of elected officials, city staff, cities of different sizes, cities in different sort of ages and stages of development and so forth, as Councilwoman Judkins knows very well. My takeaway, and I shared this with Matt, was just that it felt like there was a lot of processing still happening. And even amongst staff, there were, when they were taken, given such a bite to try and swallow all at once, they were still trying to sort of digest it and understand it as well. So we'll have another touch point on Monday where there could be additional information that they have been able to figure out about what the applications are going to be and how they're going to communicate on that.
I was on that committee for three or four years and it seemed like that Monday meeting was the same then. It just, it, it goes nowhere.
There's a lot of reacting. It continues to be and, and people in different positions. So in some, sometimes the meeting can almost feel a little disjointed because they're very short too. And you're trying to deal with some very, very big things as well. But that's not the only place where this work can happen. And Matt and I obviously continue to stay engaged with all of those stakeholders, just so that all of you can have really good information as we see more of it develop. One important point that came out in the journalism across the state on the bill when it was introduced came from Senator Whitaker, saying that he anticipated that whatever goes through the Senate will have more of that steady progress over the course of the entire session as opposed to something that moves very, very quickly. Now, things change slow, slow, slow until they don't, right? So it could go either way, but I did see that and Matt and I had discussed as well and thought, okay, if that's the case on all of us as individual cities and certainly other allies to use that time that we've got to advocate to the greatest ability that we, that we can.
To add to this discussion, Your Honor, and I had it on my notes for ports. But before I do that, Councilmember McCoy, did you have anything else that you wanted to report other than that? To add on to the eleven twenty five bill. So there's another component of that piece of legislation and it is reducing the amount of taxable, assessed valuation that's taxable for commercial property. So you'll remember back in two thousand and thirteen, there was the rollback from a hundred percent to ninety percent for commercial value. There was a backfill. You probably remember my slide from last week where that now that backfill portion that the state was providing is being reduced down to zero over a seven year timeframe for Clive. Some communities, it's a five year phase out. Well, that bill rolls commercial back even further from ninety percent to eighty percent over two years. With no backfill, no nothing to fill that gap. Now, one thing to keep in mind, particularly next year, which is a revaluation year. One thing that I know these legislators are hearing is where commercial value is going to be reassessed at. We've heard about it in Polk County in terms of some of those values coming back. Now, whether they'll come back that equivalent to make up that difference, I don't know. But if you, if that was implemented, I just ran the math quick before the meeting on our current valuations, we're about one point seven billion taxable valuation, about little under seven hundred million of that, about six hundred and sixty, something like that, a million is commercial and industrial property. So if you roll that back another ten percent, that's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit to our, across all of our tax levies. That's the ten fourteen levy. So it would be seventy percent of that roughly is the general fund. There's also a portion in that bill that rolls back utilities. How utilities are valued is a very confusing thing. This is like mid-am substations, other utilities telecom. Based on the rough math on that, that could be another hundred thousand across. So if you add that in with the residential rollback, Senate File one eighty one that I shared with you last week, which is about four hundred twenty thousand across the three levies. That's about one point two million annually lost by these pieces of legislation in terms of just where our tax levy sits today, just to, to, to kind of apple apples. Now, what you will see next year, with the commercial values though, is if the commercial values are going up, it's almost like in a way they're putting a rollback, residential rollback is the circuit breaker. You know, it has that three percent cap and that's how the rollback exists today. In a way, it's almost like they're doing that to commercial, anticipating commercial values are going up substantially next year that they're rolling back ten percent. So the net might be zero. I don't know. We'll find out a year from now, but just to give you kind of a, a level of impact for Clive. And that's Senate Bill eleven twenty five. And I think eleven, eleven twenty five is the one that has the sales tax piece in it too. And then you have eleven twenty four, Senate Study Bill eleven twenty four, which these were both companion bills. Is, has a different tool where it restricts property assessments. So if you're, the way I read the bill, and again, we're still digging into the details of the way the bills are written, which again makes me nervous is I've been doing this for twenty years. And if I'm having a hard time reading the bill, I can't imagine new legislators trying to read it. That if you're not at your levy caps, like for example, in the, in the general fund, we're not at our eight, ten cap, we're at seven twenty two. And if you're not at your levy cap, you would be allowed to have your tax, your, your use of tax dollars, property tax dollars from one year to the next grow by a cap of three point two five percent. So that is a reasonable number and, and normal inflationary times. It's a little more challenging in the current times. But if you're at your levy cap, which is seventy percent of the cities in Iowa at that eight, ten levy, you would be capped at two and a half percent growth. So it's hard caps on growth. So that's a different tool, a different way, but they're, if they're in the same time, if it doesn't exclude new construction. If you're a community like a Waki and Ankeny who's growing ten, you know, thousand people a year, you know, and the values that go along with that and the service demands that go along with that. I don't know if they would ever catch up. So it, it really affects growing communities. We're on the tail end of our high level growth. But if it would have been in place for the last few years, that would have definitely restricted us or the council's ability to look at that new value.
But same reason we should be against it, right? Just because we're on the past end, and I'm not saying you're saying otherwise. Because we're on the past end of our growth, we still need to stick together with those other cities that aren't. And right is right, right? And put our name behind what should be done in the right way, whether we were there or not, because we'd want that. I don't understand the utility thing, substations and all that of cutting theirs even further. I mean, it'd be great to be able to give the direction to only send an attack truck on a fire to the substation or the US, or this one little building up here off one hundred and fourteenth. Cut back in there.
An American's substation.
Yeah, just, just put in, you know, maybe one hose, because we don't have enough, you know, one firefighter. We'll just keep it low, but that's craziness.
So we'll be, we'll continue to track and, and I think something that Pete and I have talked quite a bit about is the narrative around this conversation and, and how cities again need to stick together. But understand that something's gonna happen. And so how do we be a part of that conversation? To, again, that same, the Councilmember Judkins was the, the meeting with Master Builders earlier this week. I, I watched the video of the meeting and, you know, we heard at the beginning of that conversation talks, like comments about, we're looking for transparency, simplicity and reliability or predictability. Thank you. Those are the three goals that I know this council shares and a lot of us share. Now, how we get there and tools, how we get there, might, we might have disagreements on, but if that is the, the principles, we can have conversations around that and talk about the different tools and mechanisms that it takes to get there. I would one hundred percent agree. I wish our property tax system was a lot more simple than it is and straightforward. Because trying to explain it to a resident is, again, even doing it for this for twenty years, it, it's, it's hard to do. It's hard for people to understand, well, here's what your house is valued, but here's what you're really taxed on. And the thing, and it moves every year, right? It'd be way easier to have a more simple way to do it. So that's the, the one optimism I have about it is if, if we can start shifting the conversation around, okay, these are the goals that you have, but if they're not willing to engage on that, then I, I, I don't, I don't know where we go from here if that's not the case. But I would hope that we can at least start to engage on those kind of higher level points.
But who's gonna engage, right? I mean, I honestly don't think it's the league, not on our behalf or many of the other cities in our areas behalf. You know, they seem to engage with this small group of cities that are rural or whatever it might be. Is the mayor deal still together on the statewide? I mean, you know, I'd be open to throw some money at a, at, at a lobbyist for the mayor's group statewide than to the League of Cities. I mean, they're ineffective. They haven't been effective for years. And why put more money towards them in any way? Get your own lobbyists, make a PAC, you know, through the mayors of this, of the state of Iowa and attack it that way, where we then do have a lobbyist with a direct ear. So it's just food for thought, but I think it's gotta happen sooner than, than not, even if we miss this year. You know, to, to bring that together for the next year.
Yeah, on that point, there was a floor speech delivered by Senator Dawson earlier this week, specifically saying to sort of preempt entities coming and saying this is going to require cuts to services. Where he said, well, the first thing, if I were one of those entities that I would cut would be all of your dollars for spending on lobbyists. Because he was frustrated with the way a committee meeting had gone, where he felt like people who were working to advocate for taxpayers ended up hearing from a lot of lobbyists paid by public entities that he fairly unfairly characterizes and lobbying against the interest of taxpayers. So this is obviously getting heat, very, very much heated.
Well, someone's doing their job is what that means. Yeah, to me, if the lobbyists have got him irritated, they're doing their job.
Yeah, the, the, the point that, one thing that, you know, as we get further in this, we want to make sure that we keep you all very much informed about what we're hearing so that you all can make appropriate decisions. As you all know, our delegation in Clive is not in these leadership positions and really not in these discussions as well. But we'll continue to communicate with all of them too, so they understand what the effects could be for Clive. But I want to reiterate what Matt said, that something's coming. The majority party ran on this and won. And they feel empowered now to do something on it. And for lots of important reasons, they feel like they should do something because it isn't transparent and it isn't simple. And it is something that is a major investment that people make by living in communities. They pay a lot in property taxes and they should expect great value that comes from that. So because something is coming, our ability now to continue to work to get the most sound policy possible, avoid surprises as much as possible are going to be some key things we're thinking about over the next months.
And to kind of finalize the point too, is just getting a sense from the council is as this process goes further along, you know, we're gonna try to come back to you as much as we can. And also want to get an understanding too, because I think what's also effective is for elected officials to see elected officials. You know, they don't really want to talk to staff. You know, they don't really want to talk to staff. I've had that experience down there as a city manager. They don't really want to, even though. The knowledge is there and we can have a dialogue, it is effective for them to be communicating with an elected official at the local government level. So. Your comfort level with that in terms of, you know, wanting to engage on this, you know, with Pete and myself and. And maybe it's discussions down there and connections, you know, I welcome your feedback on that. You don't have to share it with me tonight, but that's something that. Will be helpful down the line, especially with our closeness to the state, the state capital. And the ability to go down there and have some conversations. So just something to consider, but it is effective to have. Elected officials with us when we're having these dialogues.
And that's part of the trouble with the way the league is approaching this because. While you are on that call and that's great, you know, it wouldn't matter if it was you or me or anybody from Clive because. Our delegation isn't going to be able to be that helpful with it anyway. But they're not getting it out beyond that core group. And that's where all the cities around the state are saying, what's going on? We're not hearing anything. So.
Same.
I, I don't know if they think it matters to talk to that group on Monday mornings. It might be a little bit of a sounding board, but it's got to get beyond that.
And to clarify my point, they didn't have a lot to share three days after the bill had been introduced either with that group. Right, that point. That's, so that's my point. I don't think that they're trying to. Restrict information flows to their membership. Ultimately, any decision that the league staff takes to sign as in favor or against or indifferent on a piece of legislation gets through, goes through, I think their executive board. Not this legislative sounding board. And that group is the same as I described with legislative group, it's got quite a bit of diversity of opinions.
So I'll end on a happier note, Your Honor.
Please do.
So really proud of staff. This is, you know, if you understand workers' compensation and, and insurance and how this all works. But the city's mod factor, we just got notified is going down, which is a good thing. To zero point five nine. You're not going to find too many organizations. And we're probably the lowest of, one of the lowest cities in the entire state of Iowa with our mod factor. So that is a credit to our staff for being safe. And for the follow up that staff and supervisors do if there is an injury. This is a huge credit because there's a huge financial credit. And I shared, and this was shared very briefly last week during the trust and agency fund discussion. But there is a credit we receive financially as a city on our workers' compensation insurance. Because of that low mod factor. So again, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think it was a hundred and something. Just last year, that doesn't take this one into account that we were point six four, I believe. Before, and this went down to zero point five nine. So one is average. And so we're one point oh, so very happy with that.
Matt, just to touch on that, some of the deals with, with mod ratings, that, that means a lot. It, it says a couple of things, like you said. It saves the city tremendous amounts of money on, on workers' comp. The other thing it says that we have a system of, of very safe practices here. So you don't have the kind of injuries that, that you have out there. So kudos to staff and employees for being safe and, and not getting hurt.
I'm sorry, and on a, and on a happy note, Your Honor.
Thank you. Legal counsel? Any correspondence? Anything else for the good of the order this evening? That will adjourn at seven thirty three.